Oakland Soul. And I just have three points I want to make. General point, I just really hope that the Board of Supervisors will do what it can to support this amazing organization. These teams are so positive for the community and when in a time when there's so much negative things happening, we really feel that the Oakland Roots and the Oakland Soul are just a positive force. We've lost three professional teams recently. So the Roots and the Soul are a real hope and a bright spot. Specifically asking that the county to fulfill its commitment to lease the Malibu lot to the Oakland Roots and the Soul so that they can build a stadium. We're asking the county to finalize the sale of the former Raiders training facility to the Oakland Roots and the Soul. And we're asking the JPA to expedite the agreement for the 2025 season at the Oakland Coliseum. Thank you very much.
Items B and E. I am an owner of the Oakland Roots and Soul, but I'm not alone. There are more than 4,000 community members who joined the ownership ranks in last year's very successful community stock offering. I'm not here to promote my own interests as an owner, though. I'm here to promote a really fabulous organization that is doing great things for Oakland and for Alameda County. The Raiders left us, the Warriors left us, the A's left us, but the Roots and Soul want to be here. They're investing in the community and in Alameda County, and they're breaking records. The Soul is the first professional women's soccer team in the Oakland area. I'm asking the supervisors today to fulfill the Malibu lot commitment. Let us build a stadium for the team to play in that's convenient for Oakland residents and East Bay residents. I'm asking you to finalize the sale of the training facility to the Roots and the Soul so that we've got a great place to develop players for the long term and to encourage the Joint Powers Authority to allow the teams to use the Coliseum for the 2025 season. And I also want to say congrats to Oakland High and Oakland Tuck. That was a fabulous ceremony you guys did at the beginning. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Supervisors, I am Lindsay Barron, the president of Oakland Roots and Soul. We have been working for many months with the county of Alameda and the city of Oakland on securing a game day venue and practice facility. Recently, however, these projects have stalled. I'm here today to ask for your help because we are running out of time. First, please do not sell the county's interest in the Malibu lot without completing a lease with Oakland Roots and Soul for a stadium in Oakland. We have completed all of the ENA's requirements that are under our control. We have agreed to lease terms, including paying market rate rent. But we have been waiting since February 9th, when we agreed to terms for the city and the county to deliver the lease term sheet. It's the final step that will allow us to move towards a binding agreement. Please do not destroy our best hope for a stadium in Oakland by selling the property without first completing the lease. Second, please approve the sale of our training facility. The city approved the sale in February, but the county's approval is not complete. If we do not have site control soon, we will miss out on serving as a host training facility for the World Cup in 2026, and our ability to operate Roots and Soul will be severely jeopardized. We request that going forward, representatives of the Board of Supervisors and the city council join our weekly meetings with city and county staff to ensure that we are all working with a sense of urgency and a problem-solving mindset so the Oakland Roots and Soul can play and practice in Alameda County. Thank you for your time and service.
Hello, Honorable County Board of Supervisors. Good morning. My name is Adrice Argandual. I am one of the co-founders and the CMO of Oakland Roots and Soul Sports Club. I want to first and foremost thank you for the time and attention to the club matters. I also want to give a massive shout out to the basketball teams in attendance. They give me inspiration every single day to wake up and do what I do. I also want to thank the entire community, fans, investors, and the countless folks across Alameda County for sending letters showing support and holding strong to ensuring Oakland Roots and Soul persist. Your resilience is literally why we do this. My sister and I were born in Oakland and are products of refugees who fled Afghanistan during the Soviet invasion. Oakland and the East Bay was home. Our sports team shaped my identity. It gave me a sense of hope and provided a vehicle for inspiration. It's why I co-founded this club and I work so hard every day to make it a reality. We played soccer our whole lives, very much like the incredibly diverse East Bay area, but we didn't have our own team and our own path here in the East Bay area. And to be very clear, San Jose is South Bay, not East Bay, so that does not count. I ask you to please help us move along, our ability to play at the Coliseum next year, have a home to build culture and tradition with our training facility, and help push forward the Malibu lot discussion. This is an epic moment in our history. This will help facilitate the introduction of Oakland in the East Bay area's first women's professional soccer team. It will allow us to turn the page and build something by the people for the people from the ground up, not top down. This community is unbelievably strong, more than any community in the world, and they deserve this. Thank you for your time.
Speaking on the real estate items for Oakland Roots and Soul, I want to agree with the calls that Lindsay Barron's made about the specific action that she'd like you to take. And the reason that I'm supporting this is that Oakland Roots and Soul is not just sports clubs. They are more than than sports, as we've seen from the basketball teams that you honored today. Sports can be can be a community building vehicle. It can be a space where we can find joy, where we can create relationships together. And the Oakland Roots and Soul are not just by coincidence creating this. This is part of their DNA. They're not a big conglomerate. They're not interested in extracting from our community. They're adding to our community. They're an inclusive organization. They're a trusted community partner. They support local businesses, local people, and they they are so proud in celebrating the beauty and power of not only Oakland, but the whole East Bay. By completing the projects that Lindsay had spoken about, you get to be a part of a narrative of joy and progress in Oakland and Alameda County. And you support this sports business model that frankly should be celebrated. It should be part of the thing that differentiates us here in Oakland and the East Bay. So please finalize this lease, agree to terms for the Coliseum, or get the the JPA to do that and complete this transaction for the training facility. Thank you very much.
Board of Supervisors, thanks for your time. My name is Michael Geddes. I'm an Alameda County resident in Oakland. I'm also one of the co-founders of the Oakland Roots and Soul, and I have the privilege to serve as the organization's chief purpose officer. That I'm the only person in the whole of professional sports in the United States to hold this position speaks to the unique opportunity we've created here in Alameda County to redefine how professional sports teams operate within their communities. As co-founders, our belief was and is that a sports team should be an integral part of the fabric of its community, and we aspire to be a beacon of hope for young people in our county like the ones we honored in this room today who've seen three teams taken away. We're proud that our club has brought global media attention and national acclaim to the county for our pioneering approach, including awards for our work in community leadership and anti-racism. We're proud that many other teams, not just in soccer, but all across sports, are looking at Alameda County and have reached out to us for advice on how they can follow our model, influencing more professional sports teams to focus on their community and not just on profits. We're proud of the work we've done to make our game day inclusive and welcoming to all, be one of the first teams in the nation to focus on and invest in the mental health of our athletes, and to build a more equitable and accessible pipeline for youth talent across the Bay Area. And we're proud of the hundreds of thousands of dollars we've raised and invested in our region's underserved communities, nonprofit organizations, and schools. But none of this matters if we do not have a home. If we cannot operate in Alameda County, not only will our community lose its last remaining professional sports team, but we will no longer be able to point to the East Bay as the place where we made possible a new model for professional sports, one which focuses first and foremost on the most important people of all, the community and the fans. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your time.
Area native and a 30-year soccer fan, go Arsenal. And I was elated when I found out the Roots were going to be that we had a soccer team in Oakland. I have to say that I'm furious at how disloyal the other teams have been to Oakland and to their fans, who are really ride or die. And I see teams, these teams abandon our community. We have a team that wants to be here, and I think it's important. And I want to encourage you to do all that you can to ensure that they're able to do that. Soccer is arguably one of the most popular sports in the world and a fastest-growing in the U.S. Soccer is also an international language that literally prompts people at war to lay down their arms. In this world that seems hell-bent on polarizing us, what the Roots are doing here in Oakland and the game that they bring to us all is vitally important. It will not only boost our economy, it will provide us with a wonderful source of pride that having our own team typically does, but it also gives us something that will further join us, and that can never be a bad thing. So I want to encourage you to do everything that is being requested to ensure that the Roots are able to stay here, be here, and thrive. Thank you.
I'm Peter Gamas, president and CEO for Visit Oakland. And I just want to share some tourism economic numbers that we recently had in 2022 for Oakland. We had over 3.3 million visitors, $500 million in visitor spending, which resulted in 5,300 jobs in the Oakland community. I'm here to advocate for the Oakland Roots and Soul, ensure that the county fulfills to lease the Malibu lot and Oakland for the Oakland Roots and Soul. And please vote to finalize the sale of 1220 Harbor Bay Parkway Training Facility to the Oakland Roots and Soul. As we all know, FIFA is going to be here, World Cup in 2026. This will open doors for sports tourism in Alameda County. This facility, if approved by FIFA, will host several visiting teams and programming, impacting hospitality and tourism for a long period and showcasing Alameda in a positive media light. I stress positive media light. As sports tourism has impacted many cities and has increased occupancies in our hotels due to these type of tournaments and events, Visit Oakland is ready to amplify this event and work hand in hand with the Oakland Roots as we do positive media stories for Alameda. According to the U.N. World Tourism Organization, sports tourism is the fastest-growing industry in travel. Sports tourism can be defined as an entry-level playing competitive sport or traveling to watch a sport. As a reminder, this will increase tax revenue, boost local businesses, and most importantly, attract new businesses to the Alameda County. Thank you for your time.
True chamber, and we want to communicate our support for the county leasing the Malibu lot to Oakland Roots and Soul and finalizing the sale of the 1220 Harbor Bay Parkway Training Facility to Oakland Roots and Soul. We also encourage the JPA to expedite the agreement for the 2025 season at the Oakland Coliseum. The Oakland Roots and Soul are integral to the future of sports in Oakland. They are a community-driven organization with a deep commitment to the spirit of Oakland and the transformative power of sports for social good. They are dedicated to fostering economic growth by creating employment opportunities for Oakland residents, a vital resource for Oakland as we emerge from the pandemic, and work to promote economic development and opportunities in our city. Thank you.
The board, my name is David Torres, and I'm director in chief of Falc Northern California. I stand before you today as a representative of the men and women that were tireless to perform ambulance service to the citizens of Valumene County, as well as first aid for every home game to the Oakland Roots, players, staff, and fans since their inception. Today, I urge you to lend your support to two invaluable assets that exemplify the very essence of Oakland, the Oakland Roots and the Oakland Soul Soccer Clubs. In a city as diverse and as vibrant as Oakland, our sports team are not just sources of entertainment. They are pillars of unity and sources of inspiration. The Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul are more than just soccer clubs. They are symbols of resilience, community, and inclusivity. They bring people together from all walks of life, transcending barriers of race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. As emergency responders, we at Falc witness firsthand the challenges the community faces. From accidents to medical emergencies, we understand the importance of fostering a strong sense of community and belonging, and sports have a unique ability to do just that. They create a common ground where differences are set aside and unity prevails. I urge you to support the wishes of the Oakland Roots and the Oakland Soul in the real estate items on the closed session. This would help support our last remaining professional sports team and give the youth of Oakland something to aspire to. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Lindsay Barron and Adrice, I would like to reiterate again that we fully support the, I'm sorry, we fully support the, I am sorry, I lost, I lost. Can you hear me still?
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, we fully support the county fulfilling its commitment to the Oakland Roots and Souls to establish a stable, long-term home for the Oakland Roots Club. We also would like you to support the voting to finalize the sale of for the 1220 Harbor Bay Parkway Training Training Center to Oakland Roots and Soul. Please encourage the JPA to expedite the agreement for the 2025 season at the Oakland Coliseum, and please finalize the lease for the temporary stadium at the Malibu lot. Thank you so much for your time.
Good morning. My name is Will Cruz. I'm a fourth generation owner of LJ Cruz Plumbing in Berkeley, and we are a proud brand partner of the Roots and Soul. The Roots organization has made it clear time and again that they are committed to Oakland and are committed to using the power of sports for social good. Ensuring they have a place to play and train in Oakland is imperative. I'm asking today that you fulfill your commitment to lease the Malibu lot so they can build their proposed stadium, finalize the sale of the training facility so they can, among other things, host World Cup teams, and encourage the JPA to expedite the 2025 Coliseum agreement so we can keep the Coliseum spirit alive one more year. Oakland has lost enough civic pride. It's time to keep professional sports where it belongs. Thank you.
Of the Oakland Roots. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to briefly talk about why I'm here. I normally don't do these kinds of things, but I know how important it is for me, being a undocumented person for most of my life. My parents brought me here to Oakland when I was about four years old and quickly found a home here in Oakland. I'm now a artist who dedicates his entire career in beautifying the city of Oakland. I was a big Raider fan, big A's fan, and big Warriors fan. And with all honesty, that was all I really had growing up here in Oakland. Outside of crime and all that stuff, the sports for me were the best part of the city. And it all got taken away slowly, painfully. And me and a lot of my friends, we found a big home, thriving home with the Oakland Roots, and to hear that they are in jeopardy hurts my soul. So I just wanted to come in and share from my perspective on how much this team means to me and to my friends who, this is all we have left. I run the supporter group there with the Oakland Roots. I work hand in hand sometimes with Adrice and their staff. And I will say that I don't think I've ever found some of the most caring individuals in a sports team. Thank you guys for your time.
Good morning, Alameda Board members. My name is Alfonso Gavara. I'm the president of Forever Oakland. You guys know Grizz Jones really well. We are well-known and well-respected with the community. I'm here to support the Oakland Roots because they are the only team left here. We have seen the Oakland Raiders, A's, and Warriors left, left their fans behind. By the experience that we had, now we're we're working with the Oakland Roots to reconnect with the community because the community of East Oakland feels like they've been abandoned. We want to reconnect with them, with Oakland Roots and other fan base, and we're making history. You guys can make that history right now to to keep this team here in Oakland, especially a female sports team that'll be making history for Oakland. They will bring money, jobs, and again, we're reconnecting with the community, especially with the Anheuser citizens. So we're working, we're working really close with the Oakland Roots, with the community, and we need to support. The people of East Oakland needs that really bad. We have that bad image. We could change it. You guys can change it. Let's change that image. We all have the same goals. We all want the same thing, but let's make it happen because we are, we lead by example. My son comes with me all the tailgates and cleaning events. He's bringing his own friends from school. So that's lead by example. Let's teach the youth that we're here and we love Oakland. So let's make this happen. Let's work with the Oakland Roots, give them what they want because we get our benefit. I'm hearing a lot of new plans moving forward, and I'm excited. So here, all I'm saying forever Oakland is here to support for the Oakland Roots, and I hope you guys will make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Speaking on behalf of the OKC68s, I'm the president and in favor of the Soul and Roots item, please, we're asking you all to commit to them, to the Malibu side, expedite the process for them to play at the Coliseum, agree to the sale that would benefit the Roots and Soul for the training facility. And not only that, but bring world-class soccer to Oakland in 2026 for the World Cup. I mean, this is such an obvious, good, positive thing for Oakland that it's very frustrating for y'all not to see or move quicker on this. I'm also asking for the JPA to, or the county to stop the sale of their share to the Oakland A's as well, to sell to the city of Oakland. You can still do that. And you guys are hypocrites if you're celebrating Oakland Tech and Oakland High, but not celebrating this great organization that wants to do good for Oakland. So I ask for you guys to please commit to the Roots Soul and have world-class soccer in Oakland coming out there. Okay? We had Fans Fest, and we brought over 15,000 people to Jacklin and Square. We can say, day in and day out. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Well, Guy, you're a member of the Oakland City Council. I grew up here in the city of Oakland, raised three daughters and a son, and they were all part of the soccer program, whether it's at the elementary school level, at the high school level, and certainly at the university level. And so I had many opportunities, not only with a fan, as a father, but also as a coach. I coached soccer at the elementary school years and throughout the middle school, high school years. And luckily, we, I had a team that won state championships, regional championships, so I had the opportunity to travel from the state of Washington to Washington, D.C., and have our team compete at different levels. And so the bottom line for me is I am in full support of the Oakland Roots, Oakland Soul soccer team here in Oakland, Alameda County, the state of California. This is public land that we're dealing with. It belongs to the public. It belongs to the families, to the future children of Oakland. And we need to create the environment, the attraction to allow them to feel energized. And because when you look at the requests right now at the city level and at the school district level, people are looking for soccer fields because the little ones are involved in soccer more than they are in other sports. So the reality for me, they're a role model for Oakland to have. Not only is it a business attraction, creating jobs, but also it's an opportunity for the little ones, male and female, to be able to have a team that we all can feel proud of. So I'm in full support of them being allowed to use the Coliseum. Why not? We had, at my time, I remember going to the Coliseum to see professional sports from out of the country and from one couple from Mexico and South America. They filled the stadium, more, more, more fans than the A's or the Raiders had. And so I think that, you know, right now soccer is an international sport, and Oakland, Alameda County, and the state of California deserve a team here in Oakland to utilize the public land and the public facilities that we have available. Thank you so much.
Support of the Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul. I want to reiterate all that everyone else has said. There's been a whole lot of conversation about who we are, who this team is to the city, and what they mean to us. I want to speak professionally and say I represent the Oakland Museum of California, and we have done a lot of work with Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul. We are, they are amazing partners. They are amazing community members, and everything that we've ever done with them has been something that moves the community forward. On a personal note, I am a mother of two boys. We have been members of Oakland Roots since day one. I have friends who we, everything about going to the games is about community. Everything about going to the games is about being rooted here in Oakland. They are the real deal. We have seen teams leave us. We have seen acrimony. We have seen all kinds of negativity around our sports. This is, these are two teams that are rooted in Oakland and that are a positive force in the community. Again, everything that everyone has said about the technicalities, ensuring that they have the Malibu lot, making sure that they have their training facility, expediting the agreement for the 2025 season, the Oakland Coliseum, these are all things we want to see. And on very personal notes, these are teams that we need representing our city. I'm also a D6 resident, and so I would love to be able to easily walk to games, get to games without having to use a whole lot of extra effort. And we have a lot of friends who are looking to support the Coliseum even more and all of the stores around there. Thanks very much.
I'm Drew Hess. I live in and work in Alameda County. I am a huge fan of the Oakland Roots and Soul teams and foundation and all the work they're doing in the community. I've got two teenage daughters and love how we come together for games, not only just as a family, but actually as a community. Every demographic of the county are at these games, and it's amazing to see, and it's amazing to see how we actually can connect with the world through this game. A lot of other supporters have articulated some of my points and some other great points, but I just wanted to stress one thing, that this organization is best in class of how they're managing the process of growing this team from the ground up. And for me, it feels like the only kind of existential threat to the team's success is having a home, a home to train and to play. So they they need a home so they can continue to support the community and and to grow local talent. And we've heard a little bit about that today. So so please follow through on your commitment to lease the facility to the Malibu facility to the Roots and the Soul and as well as approve the sale of the training facility on Harbor Way to the Roots and Soul. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
I'm Sonia Carabel, and I'm with Unite Here Local Two, which represents 15,000 hospitality workers around the Bay Area, including concessions workers at the Coliseum. We've heard that there's plans to potentially sell the county's 50% share of the Malibu lot at auction soon, and we really want to warn you against doing this. When the county sold its half share of the Coliseum to the A's, that created a confusing mess that has left our members with little certainty about their long-term job prospects at the Coliseum. The city jointly owning an undifferentiated share with a private owner creates a legally complicated situation that takes away from the public's ability to have a say in what happens there. So please do not sell off the Malibu lot, at least until you have a concrete lease plan in place. Thank you.
Most of the other people in this meeting have been. I just kind of want to call in to, I guess, obviously affirm the other things that the other speakers have said, but just to kind of contextualize like what the Oakland Roots are as a soccer team. They get referred to as like a triple A team a lot, and I think that that's something that's like categorically false. It's an independent soccer team, and I think that's really important for the community is having something that's independent like that, and it exists in a league that is not small. There were USL championship games on CBS last weekend that went head-to-head with Major League soccer games and outdrew them. They drew hundreds, they drew over 100,000 more viewers than Major League soccer teams. This is a big league full of lots of things. There are plenty of teams in this league that have been demanding public funding for stadiums. They have gotten public funding. They have gotten public funding for stadiums, and the Oakland Roots haven't done that. They are simply asking that you extend the lease that you said you were going to extend to them, and I think that's more than a fair ask, um, if you contextualize where they exist, um, and the things that their peers have been asking for. They are being so reasonable, um, that I don't really understand why I have to not be at work and talk about it. Um, it's extremely frustrating. Um, if you under, it's extremely frustrating to understand this in the full context and to, uh, still have to be here and publicly demand it, because it's so overwhelmingly obvious that this is what the community supports, and I hope that you will see that overwhelmingly obviously, overwhelmingly obvious support and, um, follow it. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to join the others who have spoken in urging the county to proceed in leasing of the Malibu Lot to the, uh, to the Oakland Roots and Soul in the, in the sale of the twelve twenty Harbor Bay Training Facility, and in allowing the Roots to play at the Coliseum in twenty twenty five. Uh, this, this body today has already recognized the importance of youth athletics, and I'd like to join in, uh, the others in congratulating the basketball teams from Oakland High and Oakland Tech on their success. Uh, the Roots and Soul offer an opportunity to youth in Oakland to see their community represented and to see sports occurring at a high level here in Alameda County. Uh, the sale of the training facility in particular, uh, will allow the Roots and Soul to conduct youth programs and training camps, further investing in the athletic ability and future of youth in our community. Uh, the facility will also allow an international squad participating in the twenty twenty six World Cup to call Alameda County its temporary home, which would be a, a great boon for the county and its residents. A permanent facility for the team, close to infrastructure that would allow fans to arrive and participate, uh, including BART and the Airport Connector, Amtrak, I eight eighty, and adequate parking. All these will ensure that this organization can continue to thrive and grow. You know, the Coliseum will need a tenant for twenty twenty five, and the Roots and Soul need a facility that will meet the overwhelming demand of fans in the community to see high-level athletic competition. We, we have a great opportunity here. Uh, please do not delay in the sale of the training facility or the leasing of the Malibu Lot or the Coliseum. Thank you.
Name is Joanne. I'm the co-founder of My Youth Soccer, providing free soccer camps and a teen mentor program in Oakland since two thousand and eight. I'm also a resident of Oakland since nineteen ninety six. I'm an Oakland Roots and Soul fan and a community advisory board member to the Oakland Roots, uh, since its founding. I'm here today for you, uh, to consider, please, taking immediate action on behalf of our organization and our community here in Oakland. We appreciate the unanimous vote in September in support of our facility and to negotiate and execute the exclusive negotiating agreement. Um, however, as you've heard, we are nearing the six-month deadline, and, uh, we are also clearly experiencing a delay, um, in the sale of the training facility in Alameda. So I understand that there are other opportunities at play here for the board to consider, but honoring the agreement with the Roots is paramount. I will say that as a former college soccer player myself, um, having a local team to cheer for, to look forward to supporting in person, has been key to, uh, living and thriving here in Oakland. And with the World Cup and the Gold Cup coming to the Bay Area, the potential for hosting team trainings, um, international teams, and including Oakland in the tournament festivities is a dream come true. So, um, I just, um, I just want to implore you all really, uh, to honor your agreement with the timeline necessary, and I'm just here to advocate and facilitate Oakland citizens' interests above and beyond any other potential interested parties. Um, and you know, it would be, uh, you know, disappointing to our My Youth Soccer community to learn, uh, that this initiative, uh, did not move forward, and, uh, I appreciate your time today.
A lot of the, you know, the Oakland Roots, those sports teams, it's really very good that we have, uh, ability to bring together the community and, and to attract people from outside the community to, into Oakland, but not far from Oakland, not from, not far.
Um, I want to say that, um, I support all the eloquent speakers that have spoken before me in support of the Roots, and I want, um, to let you know that, um, you have a unique chance here to, uh, keep professional sports in Oakland. I know so many people here are mad and sad about the loss of our professional teams. They blame the owners, they blame politicians, elected officials. It's time that you do your job to keep professional sports here. It means so much to people. It means so much to our community, and I just hope you do your job and listen to the people. Thank you. That's all.
For having me today, Ray Bobbitt, um, speaking on behalf of the Roots and Soul. And, um, we've, uh, worked in a cooperation agreement with the Roots and Soul and have worked diligently with them with respect to, uh, what they're bringing to the table at the Coliseum site. Uh, we think they're a great organization that we have a great alignment with, and we're just hopeful, uh, that there be some consideration to move forward the pieces, um, that they need to put in place in order to, to further their objectives. So just wanted to thank you very much for your time today. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, I am calling in today to voice my support for the county to fulfill their commitment to lease the Malibu Lot, to finalize the sale of the twelve twenty Harbor Bay Parkway Training Facility, and to expedite the agreement for the Oakland Coliseum for the twenty twenty five season. Um, I'm twenty-three. I've grown up in Oakland my entire life, and the Oakland Roots are such a source of pride and community, and seeing this organization come together and grow has been one of the most incredible things I've, I've ever experienced as an Oakland and Alameda County resident. And so I just want to voice my support and encourage you guys to do everything you can to help them succeed and help them stay in Oakland. Um, thank you.
My name is Peter Bloom. I'm an Oakland resident, uh, and I write and publish, uh, the Roots blog, uh, an independent fan-run, uh, news site covering the Oakland Roots and the Oakland Soul. Uh, I'm calling, uh, to, to echo the points made by, uh, the other callers, uh, to encourage the board, uh, to complete, uh, the sale of the Harbor Bay Parkway, uh, facility, uh, to negotiate the ten-year lease for the Malibu Lot, uh, and to, uh, expedite the lease for the Coliseum for the Roots and Soul for twenty twenty five. You know, the, the Oakland Roots and Soul are extremely important to me for the reasons other folks said, uh, as a way of forming a community and integrating in the community. I, I'm not a Bay Area native. I am a transplant, and the Roots have helped me connect to Oakland, uh, connect to Alameda County, the Greater East Bay, and to make, uh, some really good friends, many of whom, uh, have called into this meeting already today. Uh, so, uh, to the extent I misstated, uh, anything here, defer to what Lindsey Barrett said earlier, uh, and I appreciate your time.
Hi. Uh, my name's Beth Robbins. I'm an Oakland resident, and I'm speaking in support of the Oakland Roots and Soul. I fully, um, agree with everything said by all the speakers before me on what they've all said so eloquently. Um, these teams are amazing community partners. They want to be here. They have a deep commitment to our community. They're invested in our community and participate in our community. Uh, they bring people, people together and create a wonderful, welcoming, positive family atmosphere at their games. Uh, so we should be taking every step we can to help them grow. We should guarantee them a home here and celebrate all of the posi, positive things that they bring to our city and county. We need to, um, so we need to step up and, and get the things done that they need done, and I urge you to support those efforts. Thank you for your time.
Twenty-five. I'm just speaking up this morning to beg you guys and to request that you guys ensure the fulfillment to lease the Malibu Lot, to, uh, finalize the sale of twelve twenty Harbor Bay Training Facility, and to encourage you guys to expedite the agreement for the twenty twenty five season at the Coliseum. Um, I'm calling today. I'm a, I'm a citizen of Oakland. I live in Oakland, and as a child, I have so many memories wrapped up in the Coliseum, going to A's games, going to Raiders games, going to Warriors games, growing up with my family, developing so much civic pride and being someone who was born and raised in Oakland and developing such a love for the East Bay. And I think we're in danger of losing that, and the Roots are going to help fulfill us, help us kind of keep that commitment to civic pride and help develop that civic pride. I was in the military, and while I was serving in the Army, you know, I was gone. I was on the East Coast, and I was just biding my time to come back home, to kind of come back to the East Bay. And, you know, I bought a house in Oakland because I wanted to be someone who committed to my community, to try to make it a better place. And I think that, you know, with kind of the bad reputation that Oakland and the East Bay is getting right now, it's important to reward organizations and individuals that want to put, throw down their roots and make the East Bay and make Oakland a better place, especially East Oakland. So please consider kind of supporting the Roots and supporting the Soul, and that's all I have to say, and I hope you have a great day.
Previously made on these items as a lifelong Alameda County resident, specifically Saliandro Hayward, and most recently Castro Valley, many of my favorite memories revolve around soccer. That includes professional soccer games I've attended with my father and my own children at the Oakland Coliseum, played by some teams that I'm guessing many in this meeting don't recognize or remember, including the Oakland Clippers of the sixties, the Oakland Buccaneers and Oakland Stompers of the seventies, as well as countless international clubs and countries that have played in that historic facility. This is a chance to provide Alameda County and Oakland residents future opportunities to create those same type of lifelong memories. The Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul call Oakland their home and positively incorporate Oakland into their identity. At a time where the general public's perception of Oakland is that of a city that is crime-ridden, economically challenged, and that plays sports teams abandoned for perceived greener pastures, I strongly encourage the county to move forward with fulfilling the commitment to lease the Malibu Lot to the Roots and Soul, finalize the sale of the Harbor Bay Parkway Training Facility to the Roots and Soul, and I encourage the Joint Powers Authority to expedite the agreement for the twenty twenty five season at the Oakland Coliseum. This is a once-in-a-generational opportunity to provide, to both change public perception of Oakland for the positive, but also provide tangible economic benefits to Oakland and Alameda County through sporting and community events with the Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul. Failure to move forward with the lease of the Malibu Lot, the sale of the Harbor Bay Site, and the rental agreement of the Coliseum for the twenty-five season would be negligent and cause irreparable economic and other civic harm to Oakland, Alameda County. Do not let the Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul go the way of other former Oakland sports teams. Thank you.
Twenty-five, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five. Um, as everybody so eloquently stated before, it's a great reason to help, uh, the Oakland Roots and Oakland Soul continue to grow in Oakland. Uh, y'all have the power to do that. Um, please help us make it happen. I don't want to make it too long. I just really want to echo how powerful the Oakland Roots and Soul is for this local community. Um, beyond just sports, it's at the intersection of, uh, of culture in many ways, culture that we need to continue to develop, uh, not only just for the outside perception of Oakland, but actually for the people here. Um, as you can hear, there's a